All right, I'll call this meeting to, uh, call this meeting to open at six o'clock. We'll do a round of introductions, how's that?
Pledge of Legions.
Oh, pledge of legions first, I guess.
(laughing).
Pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I always forget we're in the United States. Good thing we do that every day.
It's a good reminder.
It is a good reminder. Uh, we'll do a round of introductions and I'll go to my right. Andrew Hallward.
Rachel Anderson.
Jennifer Gill.
Richard Remmelt.
Peter Caruso, town administrator.
Joseph Baker.
All right, let's dive right into this. Almost skipped over that pledge, though. That'd been a rough one. Let's see, uh, new business, discussion of approval of library gnome scavenger hunt. That's you.
That's me.
Come on down.
Um, so basically, we just wanted to do, which we did this back in September, too, is just, um, hide some gnomes around town and then, um, we have some clues for people to find them and, um, we're also doing an auction this time because people were like interested in buying them, so we're gonna have them up for auction. So we just wanted permission, basically, to hide some around town, if that's okay.
So it'll be all town property?
Yeah.
During daylight hours?
Yeah, I think last time we had the rules, um, dawn to dusk or something like that, so same rules again. Yeah.
So. Did we do a permit or something last time, I thought? No?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Nope. It's for kind of casual, informal type thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, dawn to dusk.
Yep.
Just to prevent the shenanigans from happening.
Right.
(laughing). We don't want anybody getting tased out there looking for gnomes.
(laughing).
Or do we?
Are you just on town properties or are you doing it other properties?
Um, so, um, we haven't decided which ones we're doing yet, but some, like, last time were like businesses, like, we put them at, you know, Millville Service or like, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
So if a business wants to give their permission.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like, we had some of the fire departments, police departments, stuff like that, so. Here's Colleen.
I've come in.
(laughing).
She has a gnome.
(laughing).
Ah, there you go.
Very cute.
(laughing).
I see a striking resemblance to me in there.
There you go.
Yeah, that's beard, though.
I don't know where you left off, right?
We're just.
We're talking, uh, dawn to dusk, uh, public lands and business property, like we did last time?
Yes, yes.
Uh, you're auctioning them, so that's, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we'd probably be doing only ten of them, so to give us.
Okay.
You know, because there, I did do twenty-three of them, so, um, probably only ten. That will go out, and probably the ones that are out, the ones we auction.
So when are we starting and when are we ending?
June first to June thirty.
Yeah.
Cool. And we are, uh, not allowed to play.
Why?
I don't know.
Why would you?
Maybe we'll know where all the secret spots are.
No, because we haven't dis, I haven't decided yet.
(laughing).
A highway does it? Oh, I'll have to exclude myself.
No, highway doesn't do it, I do it.
Oh.
You made those? Are you the one who made those?
I did.
Wow. Twenty-three of them?
Twenty-three. Different sizes. This is one of the meaty, this is one of the smaller ones. My biggest one is three feet.
Wow. I saw them out there last year, they're pretty impressive.
They are pretty cool.
Yeah, they're cute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the library gnome scavenger hunt, which will run from June first to June thirtieth, from dawn to dusk, with permission to post them at town properties.
Second. Take a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
There you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let the shenanigans begin.
There we go, there we go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Enjoy, ladies.
Thank you. Keep your eyes open.
I will, I will. All right, jumping on to B, annual town meeting wrap-up. What do we want to talk about?
If you had any thoughts about how things went and the issues, I guess, uh, kind of have this after every town meeting, see what you thought about it.
I'll chime in, uh, so, I did reach out to the auditor general, so they're preparing materials and we sent them a certified copy of the town warrant.
Correct.
So that is in process, they're gathering materials now, um, they'll be circling back with us, so. So that's, uh, I guess a step in the right direction.
I had some comments, so, um, one, I noticed that all the increases were voted, and I did propose one, I did support one as well. But that's something that, um, the, one of the former chairs of the finance committee who resides in my home with me is like, they don't want the override, but everyone votes for the increases, so this is not me moving.
In the right direction.
In the right direction, but I did vote for increases too, so, um, just pointing that out, and I'm, I wanted to tell them to stay, but I don't know if they wanted to have any conversation around this, because I think Andrew met with the lib, the director of the library around the building, potential building consolidation in case we need it for the future. Um, so I wanted to maybe have one of us, Andrew or me, or whoever wants to go speak to them about clarifying that warrant article, because that wasn't meant to be
Contentious.
malicious or a takeover or anything like that at all. Um, in the meetings we had for the override, there were a few people who mentioned, why do we need a library? Why do we need a senior center? And, you know, my response is first, like, even if we close both of those, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Like, out of an eight million dollar budget, or wherever we landed up landing, seven point whatever million, it's it's so small, like, it doesn't make sense to close those two things. Because the people who use them, like, really, really love them, so I know the Maloney family, like, they love the library. So I would, like, we would never vote to close it. Um, just maybe move it for some cost-saving measures, getting back to my first point, which is, we vote, like, we voted for all the increases, so we need to find other ways to kind of optimize the budget. So, yeah, it was not meant to be any kind of library attack. Um, so I don't know if we could, I'll reach out to Alyssa, I guess, and see if we could get on their agenda, just to maybe have a, a conversation, if we want to put this on the warrant for next year. Um, or if we need a special town meeting for something else, we can add it there, but it wasn't meant to, you know, we're not trying to close a library or get rid of the library as a service, it was more to try to rein in costs, because there's no appetite for an override and we, if we keep on this path, we are going to run out of money at some point. And then the state will step in. So.
And then crank up the rates?
They will. Especially when they see we're at about half of our levy, and like, we, wow, you have a whole half left? I would, if I was in their position, I'd probably be like, it's a whole half left and no overrides have passed. To make it safe, we'll put it to seventy-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Safe.
Yeah.
I don't know that they're gonna do that. That's just something that could happen.
So there was one net increase, which is really to the communications clerk, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, yours was, uh, sorry.
So mine was a last-minute thing that I thought of, okay, and this is, which was after, y, y, you know, I attended the finance committee, they originally were looking at a zero percent, and after some discussion, they came to the one-half percent increase to the non-union people. And, you know, I just sort of thought the, two percent is more an appropriate number, and so that's why also, I'm on the teachers', th, that's the metric by which my salary is determined, is the steps and lane, schedule of the, uh, teachers' thing, which is still in negotiation for next year, so it, I used a two percent COLA, they're asking for a multiple of that right now, that's what's on the table from what I understand. But anyway, so I, I thought it, I, I'd give up twenty-five hundred bucks and share it, you know, it's only a few hundred bucks here and a few hundred bucks there, but it gets them above a two percent, and therefore I thought that was a, you know, an appropriate way to recognize that they're part of the equation here, a key part of the equation, so.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I couldn't do it, which I found out from Jackie, so poor Jen, she got stuck doing it at the last minute, and I appreciate that she did that.
I did not mind doing it. But Gary asked, he's like, what was that about? I said, I don't know, Peter asked me to do it, and I said, yes.
Yeah, so she, she really did, it was a surprise to you.
It was a surprise, but that's okay.
I appreciate that.
Sometimes, yeah, I think this budget was challenging.
Absolutely.
For many reasons, so if we see things, like, I'm not surprised that there are a couple last-minute things at all, like, it was challenging.
I thought, folks, the, the people in the audience, I thought, from, as an outsider, I think you have intelligent voters asking good questions at town meeting floor, and that's a good thing.
Yeah. But one thing I probably should have pushed back on more, and I didn't, was, um, they talked about the strong chief move, someone mentioned it was a power grab. And I was like, well, if this is a power grab, then we're in a power grab situation with the police chief all the time. Because that, it was just to make the police chief and the fire chief the same. This was not a power grab. Um, so when I thought about saying something, but then I'm like, that's the point, it's probably, like, now that that's been said, it's
Well.
difficult to undo, but that was not.
Your audience had decided before
Yeah.
that began, so.
I'm sure. That's how I felt as well.
That was done and done.
Um, but yeah, this is, this was just to make, it's to make the police chief and the fire chief even. And I think when you look at the police department, and Gary mentioned this, like, they always stay within their budget, and the fire chief has not stayed within his budget. There are a couple times we've had to do year-end transfers, some significant, and we've had to say, hey, don't do that, and then secondly, like, hey, don't do this. Don't run over your budget, this is what we give you, this is voted on town meeting, this is what makes, this is what's fair. So
Yeah.
that's what we were looking to do, just put it, put it on parity with the police chief, but, yeah. A power grab, I thought that was inappropriate, but.
Anybody else? Excellent. Move along.
(laughing).
Keep on truckin', let's get this over with.
(laughing).
Uh, BMR Regional Agreement Review, uh, section thirteen.
Yeah.
Consideration of Appointment of Ad-Hoc Advisory Group, so this would be representatives from the town of Millville to sit on the ad hoc advisory groups for the school committee, right?
Correct, so you get to put two members, uh,
Right. Yeah.
Multi-member committee.
Do we have any requests?
Haven't had any yet.
No.
Okay.
It was just put out there that people are interested.
If they're interested.
Contact selectmen five.
(laughing).
Three or five. Uh, if you're, if you're interested, or Peter.
Or Peter, yeah, for sure.
Right, because it's pretty important, because they get to, I mean, review and see how well this is working for both communities.
That's a, a five-board panel, right?
Yes.
So two from each town, and then what, a superintendent, or how's that work?
So two from each town, appointed by the boards of selectmen, and four member, yeah, that's right, and let's see, two members of the school committee.
So six.
One from each member town, so six.
So six members.
And let's see, yeah, one year, appointed for one year.
Do we appoint, uh, well, the school committee's gonna want to appoint their ad hoc people.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so it's a six-member board, so you're right, yeah, there's no tiebreaker.
Oh, no tiebreaker.
But it's ad hoc. However you might define that, many people can define it different ways, right?
So we're gonna be on the hunt for two people? All right?
Yep.
Can you, um, if I may, can you, uh, explain what is the requirements of that position?
Well, they're going to be reviewing this regional agreement and determining, uh, if it's, if all terms in the agreement are applicable, and if there need to be any changes.
If you wanted to read the, that, like, that paragraph?
I've read this in the past, but, uh, which one, A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Recognizing that over time circumstances often change, and intending that this agreement should continue to serve the best interests of the member towns, the committee shall, at least at five intervals, establish an ad hoc advisory group composed of knowledgeable persons to study this agreement and report to the committee as to whether or not any changes to this agreement might be beneficial in light of the then prevailing conditions. The committee shall give any such ad hoc advisors' group report due consideration, but may exercise its discretion as to whether or not it will implement any of the group's recommendations. So it's going to be, uh, oversight. And an opportunity for us to examine whether or not the current situation is working.
So it's on the, it's the burden of the school committee, but it says the committee shall, so they must do this.
Must do that.
Mm-hmm.
The actual vote is the school committee, correct?
Yes. On recommendations.
Yeah, so, okay. Right.
Okay. Other considerations, what did you intend to do here?
Uh, whatever one wanted to talk about.
Uh, what would you like to talk about?
I, I was deferring to you, because I thought you had some comments to make there or, or later.
I had made some comments today's meeting, so how far do you want to go? Because I'll take you right down the rabbit hole.
So, so perhaps you wanted to talk about that meeting that you had today, right?
Well, I thought that was further down under the MES water update and the, uh,
So you can, yes, so you could do it there.
Right.
Yes, or you could morph them, on your call.
Yeah. Well, fair enough. So do we want to skip over the other considerations, and I'll just, we'll update on the water meeting? Unless anybody else has anything else?
What's, are we taking out order or going to A?
Well, it is, well, it's kind of dupative. So what Peter's suggesting is, is gonna touch upon four A and I.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of pointless being there.
Okay.
Simplifying and improving the agenda. Be out of here in five more minutes.
(laughing).
All right, BOS, uh, representation on BMR School Building Committee. So, Joe, you have resigned.
I have.
You have made your statement quite clear, and it was heard loud and clear across the school committee.
Good.
Do you have any comments?
Well, I resigned because at this point, after them voting against putting kids back at MES, uh, at, at this point, I just, I can't be a neutral party anymore
Mm-hmm.
um, for this committee, I just, I can't do it, and I don't know if any of us here can be at this point, to be honest with you, out of the, the five of us here, but, uh, I just, in good conscience, I couldn't do it anymore, so.
No, that's fair. And, and I respect your decision and your opinion on that, and, uh, I, I had some thoughts, and I, I've bounced it around a little bit, and not that I want to throw anybody in the bus, but I, I was thinking that maybe Rachel might be interested in, uh, joining that committee, um, if that's something you might be interested in looking at.
And it's the school building committee, right, that we're talking about?
Yes, the school building committee, correct.
So, if you're interested.
Because they're dealing with a feasibility study and what comes out of that.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think they've worked right on some input from residents and interested parties so far. And, and now with the superintendent leaving, I, I suspect this committee's continuity on the matter will be very important for both communities.
Okay.
You know?
Might give you an opportunity to weigh in, maybe weigh in on some grant opportunities, things of that nature.
Yeah. Sounds good.
So.
Details.
You'd be good at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would love to give you more details, but I, I really don't know much about it, so.
Yeah.
But this will give you an opportunity to kind of dig in, so. Do you, you want a motion to appoint her?
Uh, I think you should, just to be clear, yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rachel Anderson as the Millville Board of Sel, Millville Board of Selectment Representative to the BMR School Building Committee.
Second. Give it to Andrew.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
(laughing).
He did wear his three-piece suit today.
Uh, we'll take a, well, I'll start with Joe.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Rachel?
Oops, stay.
Aye.
There you go, you have it. Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, E, fiscal year twenty-five and a year transfers, if any.
We have none at this point, none identified, um, but perhaps by June, there might be something to at least talk about potential exposures if we haven't got anything identified.
Um.
Would probably be the fire department as the.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you want to wait on departments, but I was gonna mention the highway. I know there was a pot of money in, um, uh, water drainage testing that might be remaining, but we're thinking about using that, if you open your pictures, you'll see that we have
Yep.
uh, four or five drains in town that, um,
So there's storm wa, there's a, like, a department, stormwater management, so you anticipate spending out of that department, if you will, which you manage.
There's a line item in there for stormwater testing as well. There might be some will room that we could apply.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at that.
Before we dive into chapter ninety, but, um,
Yep.
So, there is an update there, so we made some headway. If anybody wants to know, we spent Saturday all day, um, uh, scoping pipes and drains and culverts, so, very exciting stuff.
Did anyone have to jump in?
Uh, no, 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 uh, actually was a camera operator, and I, I don't know what he used, but, uh, they're pretty clear pictures, they go right down the pipe, and it's amazing what you can see, that's the obstruction in the pipe, it's, it's kind of cool, so.
How many?
Uh, there's like four or five that, um,
What, a lot?
They're blocked or, or broken.
You're gonna get a big test on Thursday from one of them here with the weather.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, so there's some spots, we're gonna have to open some roadways, unfortunately, so. Uh, there's one there, there's a, there's a manhole cover that's been paved over. Just for an example.
(laughing).
And it wasn't us, I promise, it wasn't us.
I don't know how to respond to that.
So.
(laughing).
So, see, Jerry is now no longer amused, he's just like, why am I not surprised? I want you to know that you have the right person on the job, and I'm digging into it, so.
Pun intended.
Pun intended, yes. Where's that golden shovel?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mine.
Uh, all right, so that's one thing, uh, anybody else have anything? We're good? All right. Old Business MES Water Status Update, discussion of today's me, oh, no, this is the, um, five thirteen BMR School Committee vote not to move the students back in MES, so that was a unanimous vote, I wasn't present, but.
It was.
That was unanimous vote.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there have been some discussions since, uh, the chair has reached out to me, we've had some very candid discussions, very good enlightening discussions. I'll go down and I'll use the, uh, the Trump, uh, Trump words, bigly discussions. Um, but I think we're making some headway, so. Um, there's, I'll be present Thursday at six. We're going to have some discussions, um, and maybe a revote. So today we had the meeting, um, it was MSBA, we got a loan for the, um, is the heating system in there?
Boiler and the roof.
Boiler project, right, and the roof?
Yeah, roof from twenty twelve or fourteen, and the range, and the boiler was twenty eighteen.
Yeah, so we, we had a pretty candid and open discussion, um, I definitely laid some cards on the table, um, uh, there was a little bit back and forth, I'm, I'm not gonna dive into what happened in the past, uh, we've admitted we own the water, we've supplied the bottled, uh, water. Um, I, I think we need to revisit this, there was some state speak from the state officials, essentially. There's a deliverable where they want a written letter, um, after Thursday, documenting essentially what our path forward will be, and by us, uh, us and the school committee, so. It does sound as though they're gonna look at potentially some clawback for that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town of Millville if we don't, um, put the children back in the school, so. And they did define that use of the building is for educational purposes, so some configuration, it can be mixed use, but K through twelve, there need to be children in that building, they need to be learning, so. There, um, there is a potential for some clawback, so Thursday, I'm hoping that we can have an amicable discussion with the school committee. We can come to term and say, okay, enough's enough. Um, we've, we've met our requirements, we've given you what you have requested, and then some. Um, it's time to put the kids back in the school, so. I'm hoping that they'll take a vote on Thursday and we can move forward, so. I have spoken to, uh, Representative Soder, I did chat with him this morning, trying to get him to, um, you know, attend, a, at least, and try to broker a deal, I guess, between us and the school committee. Um, but I guess we won't know until we get there, so. Conversations are optimistic, but, um, we shall see. So.
With all due respect, the conversations have been optimistic for a couple of years now, and they still haven't done anything.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's just, at this point, the, the school board themselves, I don't know what's going on with them.
So this is where Peter, I, this is where I think Peter was kind of diving into, um, so I did, I did tip one of my hands, and, uh, we did have a discussion today, and I said, well, the children have to go back in, Millville's priority is putting the school, the kids back in that school, um, and we will withdraw from the regional agreement if this doesn't, um, we don't come to an agreement. So our number one priority is to put the children back in, and if we can't come to an agreement, we need to walk. So, enough's enough.
Yeah, I agree.
So that conversation took place today, they're aware of it, and they're aware of my intention to push forward, so. So that's, uh.
Can I clarify the motion, and then one other thing about the MSBA clawback capability? So the, the motion, as I understood it, that was voted unanimously was, um, because I was present, um, and I asked for some clarity, uh, it was a bit confusing, but it, it was not to put the children back next school year, subject to if MSBA, in essence, if MSBA does do a clawback, okay? If they don't accept extending the ability or waiver, uh, I'll call it a waiver of their requirements of having it as an educational facility. And, and a hundred and eighty days of results is how I would describe it. Uh, I guess, and I'm not clear, of the, um, new system, pretty sure that's what was meant.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know the definition of the hundred and eighty days, if it's calendar days or if it's school days. I think it, you know, one would take the, uh, understanding that it's calendar days. So six months, if you will, of new treatment system operation, I think is what was the motion. And we don't even yet know when new system operation will commence, okay? We still don't even have agreement documents from the state, we have the award, but we don't have the agreement documents yet. So that's on that, the motion and what was voted. Again, a bit ambiguous. Secondarily, just for clarity, MSBA's agreements, where the requirements are that you have the facilities under, that stuff was done, um, like the boiler, for example, are used as, as an educational facility. Those agreements are between MSBA and BMR, not the town. The town's agreement is what you just read off of, which is this guy, and this talks about how the capital works. It's, I don't think it's specifically clear in here what happens in the situation of an MSBA clawback.
Well.
One would infer, of course, that the town's responsible, but the decisions made are not by the town.
Let's hope we don't get to that point.
Correct.
So.
We have that later.
Yeah, and so, and so getting to that point, so we've had some very good discussions, uh, the chair and myself, we've kind of laid some things out, um, I think we've hashed out some of the differences between the boards, and I think we can reconcile this and move forward, and we're hoping. He's optimistic, i, it seems as though we have fulfilled the requirements that were laid out initially, which was the bottled water, um, us owning the water system, and then coming forward with a solution, so. I think him and I are aligned to the fact that we've come to, um, an agreement. Um, but the hundred and eighty days, and then the MSBA, that, that whole motion is essentially almost like moving the cheese, you know, that theory of we're moving the goalposts, so. Uh, I think it's a bit excessive beyond, um, what was in, you know, initially laid out for us, so. We've met the requirements, and it's time for them to go back, so. Um, that's how today's conversation went.
If I may, I think also, um, you, you've got an opportunity here, and you have a, you do have an opportunity here.
Yep.
Um, to settle this, and I think, um, if you look at what the mission really comes down to, um, the best uh, facilities to educate the kids.
Mm-hmm.
That should be everybody's mission.
Mm-hmm.
I don't care about your politics, I don't care if you don't like asparagus, I could care less.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Most important thing is what's the best facility for the kids. We all keep our minds focused on that, okay? And be able to understand clearly that, um, you're gonna have a lot of people in here looking at this as a test.
Yep.
Because according to what I understand, there was only thirty-eight million of these grants that were available in a pool. Uh, we have one of them. We do, that's pretty good. Um, and at the same timeframe, um, when you look at that, there would be lots of people with lots of eyeballs checking everything.
Yeah.
So to think somehow that, oh, the kids, they're not gonna, they're gonna, they're not. And I think we mentioned before, the science is there.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have eyes all over this thing.
Yeah.
Okay? Come on, folks, let's get, let's get on the stream here, let's, the thing happen. I don't believe a clawback would take place if you show good faith. You've done more than good faith. But I think what needs to be done is you need go for good faith between both parties.
Yeah.
The only snowballs right now is not the way to go.
Right.
My opinion, I mean, you do what you want, your opinion, do what you, but I'm saying to you, I think reconciliation, uh, I think the opportunity presents itself to do that. Um, and there's all the right reasons. Plus the state, if you looked at that map that you had, Dr. Gullick, or somebody gave us, there's like a hundred and fifty-three cities and towns all across Massachusetts have the same issues we have.
Mm-hmm.
It looked like a map with measles on it.
Yep.
So why would you possibly not think that we would kill ourselves to get this thing corrected? When indeed, it could be something that would flash across all hundred and fifty-three cities and towns, have the same problem we do. It doesn't make any sense that they wouldn't, so I think you have a good opportunity here, we just gotta make sure keep the rocks out of the snowballs. I don't mind snowballs, but keep the rocks out of them, that's all.
No, I, I have no interest in throwing anything at this point, Jerry, and, and we, we've had a lot of good conversations, um, between the chair and I, and I think we've really made a headway.
I agree.
I have, um, I have no energy to fight those old battles, and I, I really don't care who likes what and who doesn't.
I agree.
Um, you, you're right, this country has a water issue, it's all over, and where I work, it's just as prevalent down there, and the same water issues. Um, but they're not as political, because everybody's dealing with it. Um, and I think this issue probably was, was dormant for many years, just the testing got better. So, you know, as testing requirements improved and became more rigorous, um, you know, we got caught in the web. So, it is what it is, now we're gonna fix it. We have a great opportunity here. We have the state, and we have, uh, the feds, we, we have a lot of people that are kind of behind us here on this one, and
Remind us all, for years, nobody really acted upon this. You folks here are the ones that took up the banner and carried it.
Twenty or thirty years.
So you know what? It's about time that we carried it over the line. All of us get together, and let's solve this damn thing, and let's get the kids back to where we need to have them in the best facilities, so we can educate the kids. Uh, if you remember that night, that young lady who got up, she was from the school committee before, at the very end, and said, can we stop talking about water and start talking about education?
Yep.
I mean, I think we ought to listen to that with our ears cleaned out.
Well, I think that's the important thing, Jerry, is that we've, um, made the commitment on bottled water, and, um, and I have, I've spoken to the chair, and I said, I'm committing going forward bottled water until DEP is, um, agreeable that this project is functioning, and they're satisfied with requirements. So, it's not a question of safety. The children.
But if you notice the people, there was six or seven people who came up during that meeting.
Yeah.
There were citizens, what'd they talk about? Safety of the water and that, that, they didn't have any facts. Which is unfortunate, they didn't have the facts, but
Yeah.
Put that aside, parents have a right to speak their mind, they pay the taxes, and hell, that's what they, they do.
Well, it's perception, right.
Yep, it's perception, but we have an opportunity here to push this over the line. Something that's never been done, and I think you guys, uh, really, let's just get it done.
Mm-hmm.
Get the kids back in the school, and let's get back to educating kids, not fighting about water.
Well, Thursday, we'll know more, and, uh, I'm optimistic, but we'll see, we'll see.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome, so, um, that's what I have on it. Um, hopefully they'll take another vote come Thursday with this new information, so. I guess we'll move on, anything else to add? Good deal. Departments, if any?
Nothing.
Well, I gave you my little highway spiel. Quiet town back there. Public forum. Oh, you had your time, forget it.
I have my time.
All right, announcements?
Nothing, nothing.
Correspondence, angry letters?
No angry letters.
Telegrams, carrier pigeons?
Nothing. Pigeons on my car, windshield maybe, but.
Minutes?
Minutes, uh, you're probably gonna get another slew in the, sometime before the end of the next month.
Selectment reports? Anybody have anything? Okay. Town administration report?
Uh, nothing, I do have a meteocommit meeting, we're hoping to sign the intergovernmental agreement with SEMREC.